This kind of board of commissioners meeting is now in session with the honor of Mayor Jeff Mason.
Thank you. Nixon, would you lay some prayer?
Heavenly Father, thank you for giving us this day, Lord, and may the blessings you've given us, please be with us right now at this time, Lord. I know we've got a lot of sick people in our community and just pray that you be with us and heal them and heal those that are healing them, Lord. We pray that you be with their base and we all need to be looking to you for leading us and guiding us and just telling things how you want us to be, Lord. Thank you for bringing us here safely tonight. Lord, we pray that you be with us to do the things you want us to do and act in the way you want us to act, Lord. To help you feed the lost, the sick, all those in need, all those dealing with loss and love, Lord. Thank you most of all for my salvation. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shannon Green.
Here.
Lynn Reese.
Here.
Terry Gibbons.
Here.
Billy Bass.
Here.
Greta Kirby.
Here.
Jason Stewart. Jimmy Winfrey.
Here.
Daniel Krebs.
Here.
Dalton Pascal.
Here.
Shannon Michi.
Here.
Erica Abel.
Here.
Ron Schumay.
Here.
Ron Cowan.
Here.
Linda Nixon.
Here.
Eddie Stowe.
Here.
Roger DeW.
Here.
Charles Kent. Bill Reese.
Here.
Tommy Bane.
Here.
Joey Nixon.
Here.
Dennis Hackett. David Gross.
Here.
Frank Woodard.
Here.
All right. Out of number five is the approval of amendments from the June 8th county court. Mr. Mayor, need to add Justin Bill Haiti on page six. Just so we know that I got the only thing I read in there is what's there. Any other additions or corrections? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn. So move to second. And a motion. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We do not have any announcements tonight. Out of number seven is amendments to the agenda or approval of the agenda. This been special call. We can't add anything to the agenda tonight. Is that correct, Brandon? So I will take a motion for approval of the agenda as written.
Forward.
Shall we? Second. Take Ron Schumay. I have a motion and a second for approval of the agenda. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Out of number eight is the county mayor report. It's been some quick to knowledge. Only thing, you know, we didn't get our budget. The budget passed through budget finance a couple weeks ago, so it is done. Add goes to the paper this week. We'll come back to 2/13 for that night to pass the budget. Website is still continuing to be worked on and done. We have, as of today, thirty-two active cases of COVID-19. The executive orders came out today and basically what they did was extended all the other ones that were already in place and nothing... Well, the one change was last week we got an email stating that we could go back to regular meetings as far as, you know, no Zoom meetings, no conference calls. You had to be person, you know. But they rescinded that today, went back to extended that, that you can still have meetings via Zoom or conference call until August 29th. That was the only major change that I saw that did change what we thought was going to happen. You have the financial reports from Miss Daisy and questions on those. You did receive a handout tonight for all the fund balance, estimating fund balance. Any questions from Miss Daisy? Mayor, where are those fund balance? Do you know where the loss is down largely where? Our fund balance? At this point in time, probably eighty...
About three hundred and eighty-four thousand.
Yeah, three eighty-four. So we're looking at about 1.7 the end of this year with. And one thing we looked at the other day, and you'll see that in our budget package, but it's our cash flows. And one of the things that I was extremely excited about was the fact that there's no tax anticipation that we needed to start the year, which is a good, good thing, you know. I know we won't be tapped for thirty-four months there till we get our revenues and probably down to in October, November, Roden, but we don't foresee outside of the major emergency a need for a note start year this year. That's a great thing, so we appreciate that. Any other questions on the financial reports? If not, we'll move on to number nine, committee reports. You have your rest of the papers, meeting notes there, and roads and bridges meeting notes there. But I think Cole will talk just about those minutes in his presentation now. Moving on to out of number ten, new business. The only thing we have there is the approval of the Smith County Tennessee Audit for the Year Ending June 30th of 2019. We did not print it out because it is a lot of pages, but I'm sure, you know, it's something you look at online. At this time, I will take a motion to approve of the Smith County Audit for the Year Ending June 30th of 2019. This one before the audit committee, we had those minutes last night.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Tommy Bane. Second.
Second.
Second, Joey Nixon. I have a motion and a second for the approval of the Smith County Tennessee Audit for the Year Ending June 30th of 2019. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion for approval is granted. All right, out of Daisy's presentation. Cole, I believe you have some things you want to talk about tonight, so if you'll come on in. Number four.
At our last road and bridge meeting that we had, I've had a numerous bunch of phone calls from River Point Subdivision explaining to me what the value of the homes are and the subdivision has never been blacktopped since it's been built and just thank you that now, they want their road blacktopped. And so I got with the road and bridge committee and I got two estimates. One being for $166,000 and the other one being for $225,000 to blacktop River Point Subdivision. The road and bridge committee stated that they just say we keep doing what the way we do now. Let's blacktop the county roads, not the subdivisions. The subdivisions, if they get in bad enough shape, they'll get oil and chip just like the county roads. But I wanted to say that here on the insider, just to let the people know of River Point that I did bring it to everyone's attention, but it was left just like it always was. Just because it's a subdivision doesn't mean it gets blacktopped. But I did get two prices for the road and bridge committee. Approximately two months ago, we had some people wanting to open up Barnett's Campground. The road's been closed for forty years. And the road and bridge committee, they did decide to leave it closed and we had to do some rewording to make sure that it was understood that we were not going to open the road back up, that the road is not county. It's an abandoned county road. I just now passed around a piece of paper to everyone. It's talking about gas tax, how it's going to be going down next year because of this coronavirus and people staying at home. That was just knowledge for you all that comes from C test. Rodney Carmichael, they sent it to our office, to Daisy's office. Just let us know what revenue is going to be doing next year. Really good information there and I just wanted to provide you all with that so you all know exactly what I know if the public goes to talk to you. This is one of the bigger things that I'm sure, just taking all this equipment, it would have to be voted on correctly. The road and bridge committee, we have a lot of equipment that no longer runs, blowed up, engines blowed up. The equipment's thirty-five, forty years old. It's just worn out. I've got it all set there to be auctioned off. And the road and bridge committee, they're good with letting us take it all to Ritchie Brothers. That's where we took the last bunch of equipment. Seems like the tractors and the loaders, everything, just the equipment, the dump trucks and all, they bring more there than what they do just at a public auction because you have people there in that line of business. And if everything goes right tonight, I hope you all allow us, it's the highway department, to take all this equipment to Ritchie Brothers and sell it. And there's a resolution written years ago. Anytime that we sell equipment, we have to put it back into equipment. So that money would definitely go right back into the equipment line to replace equipment is what it would be used for. And Brandon, this last one.
Right, we should pass that. It's just one year ago, but during the disaster, a lot of us, highway departments, would go help. Like when the tornado hit Coobal, there was highway departments just picked up and went. Even though we had disaster here, I wasn't able to. But we were talking to Mr. Beller and it was actually Jeff's idea. Should we do anything where we can just do it? But believe Mr. Beller talks, it's all legal anyways. So, but that's what that was about. Is there anything y'all like to know about the highway department tonight?
They are fixing the blacktop Massey Road from the... From Massey Road to Highway 80, probably the fifteenth, the week of the fifteenth of July. It's all getting resurfaced, so all that road from Harstville Park to Massey, all that'll be new. We have a new product. It's a seater. It's kind of like a driveway seater, but a lot thicker. These new roads that we're oil and chipping, we're putting this product on them. It actually turns them black. It sells the top coat off. We did ten miles two weeks ago in New Milton. Turned out really well. Hope for y'all to be seeing a lot more of that product next year.
This department, which roads is next?
Just the condition of them. And I've actually offered all, if anybody would come and ride, I'll ride your district with you and we'll look at all the roads. Be glad to, just to see. To see your... River Hutter Edition?
No.
I know River Hutter would probably be on next year's. Ferguson Hutter would probably be on next year's. They still are the worst ones. Just off the top of my head real fast. And I don't make promises because weather comes, tornadoes, storms, it washes them away. You don't ever know.
What were you at on the moment situation, Steve?
I have two side outs running every day. James Ditter's got over half the county mode on north side. The contracts do about twice a year. I've got the south side. We're on the south side right now. The two boom tractors, of course. You know the condition of them. They're not runable.
Can we get somebody to go behind them and clean off the bridges?
As far as my men, I'll do the best I can with one item. Any certain bridge?
I'll throw them on Little Creek's back.
Right. If you call it to anybody, I'll definitely get it taken care of. Thank y'all.
All right, we'll move on to letter E, resolutions. We have thirteen resolutions tonight for approval. Number one, 06202006 is a general fund 101 budget amendment. That is the end of year moving money inside budgets to fix overages where there may have been, had there been money moved there and it goes all the way from county missions, county mayor, welfare assistance, all the way through project, employee benefit from that. Number two is 06202007, general fund 101 budget amendment and that is for the county clerk's office where they are asking for a one-time be able to move money inside their budget for a one-time bonus for their employees. That totals up to about $8,423 on that one. Budget finance asked that those two be split. So 06202007B is a circuit court move of money inside their budget to give a one-time $2,000 bonus to his employees and it's a total of $8,300. Resolution 06202008, or your growth fund. That is moving money inside his budget for the end of year cleanup on it as well. 09, resolution 09 through 14, or the school board. That's their budget amendment, the end of year, moving money inside their budget to clean up some lines within this way. 06202015 is the general debt service fund 101 amendment and is moving money and gift to cover a line that was short. 06202016, adjustments for fund balance beginning June, ending June 30th of 2019. That's some of the ones that just were, had to be done last year. And then 13 is 06209 through 710 and that is a 207 solid waste money, and he's moving money inside his budget to fix them end of year choices. We have them all in front of you. We always, always ask the question, do you want to group them and vote all at once or motion to vote on separately?
Sorry?
Motion by Ezra, second by Joey, to vote on separately. Separately? All right, we will vote on them separately. Out of number one is the 101 moving money inside its budget to clean up end of year.
You didn't call for an oral paper opposed on that?
Oh, I voted on, all right, motion, yeah, oral motion, sorry. I have a motion to vote on them separately. And second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, sorry, I got to turn page a little bit. All right, number one is the resolution 06202006 and it's the one moving money inside the general fund for end of year cleanup on those things. Motion for, motion approved by Joey. Second. Second by Tommy, motion and second. I have a motion and second. Any discussion or questions on that resolution? If not, hold on a second.
Shannon Green.
Yes.
Lynn Reese.
Yes.
Terry Gibbons.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey.
Yes.
Daniel Krebs.
Yes.
Dalton Pascal.
Yes.
Shannon Michi.
Yes.
Erica Abel.
Yes.
Ron Schumay.
Yes.
Ron Cowan.
Yes.
Linda Nixon.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Eddie Stowe.
Yes.
Roger DeW.
Yes.
Bill Reese.
Yes.
Tommy Bane.
Yes.
Joey Nixon.
Yes.
David Gross.
Yes.
Frank Woodard.
Yes.
062020 passes as announced. I will move on to number two, 06202007. And that here is the one for the county clerk's office to move money inside her budget to give a one-time bonus to her employees. This is basically the same as you guys approved, or it was approved by the sheriff's department last time and trustee of the office, so I will take a motion to approve for... Motion to approve. Motion to approve. Do you have anything?
Second.
Second from Lynn Reese. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? How much money were compounding? $8,423. It's money inside her budget and she's moving around to give bonuses.
Something that other departments got.
I have a question. Do you usually have money left to break in here?
Some, but this time some like was more, you know. It's just, you never know.
What do you usually do with it when you have left there?
Well, it usually goes back into the general fund. Just like Lynn Ann's did and the sheriff's did and everybody else has stepped up to do the $2,000 bonus that everybody got. I feel like my people deserve as much as they've got.
Any other questions or discussion? Roll call statement.
Shannon Green.
No.
Lynn Reese.
Yes.
Terry Gibbons.
No.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey.
Yes.
Daniel Krebs.
Yes.
Dalton Pascal.
No.
Shannon Michi.
No.
Erica Abel.
No.
Ron Schumay.
Yes.
Ron Cowan.
Yes.
Linda Nixon.
Yes.
Eddie Stowe.
Yes.
Roger DeW.
No.
Bill Reese.
No.
Tommy Bane.
No.
Joey Nixon.
No.
David Gross.
Yes.
Frank Woodard.
Yes.
Motion passes 11 to nine. All right. Resolution 06202007B is the same motion that was done. It's just doing it for the circuit court clerk and it's, they told with $8,300 moving it inside his budget.
Hold up a second. You said that passed 11 to nine and you said we had 21, 20?
Twenty.
I thought you said we had 21 commissioners present?
I miscounted. It was twenty.
Okay.
All right, and this is for the circuit court's clerk, Tony. A motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Lynn. About second. Do I have a second? Motion fails with no second. Moving on to out of four is resolution 06202008 and that is the highway public works fund is moving money inside the budget for the highway department. I will take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second. Second by Earl. I have a motion and a second to approve. Any questions or discussion? If not, hold on a second.
Shannon Green.
Yes.
Lynn Reese.
Yes.
Terry Gibbons.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey.
Yes.
Daniel Krebs.
Yes.
Dalton Pascal.
Yes.
Shannon Michi.
Yes.
Erica Abel.
Yes.
Ron Schumay.
Yes.
Ron Cowan.
Yes.
Linda Nixon.
Yes.
Eddie Stowe.
Yes.
Roger DeW.
Yes.
Bill Reese.
Yes.
Tommy Bane.
Yes.
Joey Nixon.
Yes.
David Gross.
Yes.
Frank Woodard.
Yes.
Motion passes as announced. All right. Out of number five is resolution 062009. It is a general purpose school fund 141. It is moving money inside their budget for cleanup end of year. I will take a motion to approve.
Michael? I'd like a motion to approve by out of nine through 14.
I'll second that motion.
Since they're all living in schools, just to speed up the roll call.
All right, we have a motion and a second to combine those. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion taken by... We have a motion and a second to approve to combine out of resolution 09.
Second.
Time to ban. 14, so that's... All right, so I will take a motion to approve those. They are all moving inside their budget. End of year cleanups.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Tommy Bane.
Sir.
Second by... I have a motion by Tommy and second by Ron Schumay. Any questions or discussion?
Might note that some of the last, some of the changes viewed to the COVID puts a middle line out of identifying that COVID views are possible, which reimbursable.
Yes, we have, we have done that as well. There's a lot of invoices that we've done in the last three, four, let's say like fifteen years for three or four months that we marked COVID so that we could get reimbursable. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, roll call statement.
Shannon Green.
Yes.
Lynn Reese.
Yes.
Terry Gibbons.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey.
Yes.
Daniel Krebs.
Yes.
Dalton Pascal.
Yes.
Shannon Michi.
Yes.
Erica Abel.
Yes.
Ron Schumay.
Yes.
Ron Cowan.
Yes.
Linda Nixon.
Yes.
Eddie Stowe.
Yes.
Roger DeW.
Yes.
Bill Reese.
Yes.
Tommy Bane.
Yes.
Joey Nixon.
Yes.
David Gross.
Yes.
Frank Woodard.
Yes.
All right, out of number 11 is our general debt service fund 101. It's moving money inside it to clean up for the end of year. I will take a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Tommy Bane, second.
Sir.
Ms. Linda. All right, I have a second. Any discussion or questions on this one? Hold on a second.
Shannon Green.
Yes.
Lynn Reese.
Yes.
Terry Gibbons.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey.
Yes.
Daniel Krebs.
Yes.
Dalton Pascal.
Yes.
Shannon Michi.
Yes.
Erica Abel.
Yes.
Ron Schumay.
Yes.
Ron Cowan?
Yes.
Linda Nixon?
Yes.
Eddie Stow?
Yes.
Roger Deve?
Yes.
Bill Reese?
Yes.
Tommy Bain?
Yes.
Joey Nixon?
Yes.
David Gross?
Yes.
Frank Woodruff?
Yes.
Passes you now. All right, item number twelve, resolution zero six twenty twenty sixteen, is adjustment for the fund balance ending June 30th of 2019, that's just changing the fund balance off the positive numbers. Motion for, motion approved by Joey.
Second.
Second by Tommy. Any, I have a motion and a second for approval, any disque- any questions or discussion?
Shannon Green?
Yes.
Lynn Reese?
Yes.
Terry Givens?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Karina Kirby?
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Yes.
Daniel Cricks?
Yes.
Dalton Pascal?
Yes.
Shannon Michi?
Yes.
Erica Abel?
Yes.
Ron Schumay?
Yes.
Ron Cowan?
Yes.
Linda Nixon?
Yes.
Eddie Stow?
Yes.
Roger Deve?
Yes.
Bill Reese?
Yes.
Tommy Bain?
Yes.
Joey Nixon?
Yes.
David Gross?
Yes.
Frank Woodruff?
Yes.
Passes you now. All right, item number thirteen, resolution zero six twenty twenty seventeen, is solid waste fund two oh seven, moving money at the end of the year to clean up lines. I have a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Second, I, Dalton Pascal, I have a motion and a second. All right, any discussion or questions on that one? If not, hold on, I'll say it.
Shannon Green?
Yes.
Lynn Reese?
Yes.
Terry Givens?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Karina Kirby?
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Yes.
Daniel Cricks?
Yes.
Dalton Pascal?
Yes.
Shannon Michi?
Yes.
Erica Abel?
Yes.
Ron Schumay?
Yes.
Ron Cowan?
Yes.
Linda Nixon?
Yes.
Eddie Stow?
Yes.
Roger Deve?
Yes.
Bill Reese?
Yes.
Tommy Bain?
Yes.
Joey Nixon?
Yes.
David Gross?
Yes.
Frank Woodruff?
Yes.
Motion passes, you have. Uh, we have no notary list tonight, and number eleven, other business, Mr. Crockett, you wanted to talk about something?
Yes, thank you, Eric. I asked the mayor to address you all about here at this meeting. Uh, the last county court meeting was, you know, I was not able to attend that night, and that was the night that the decision was made, uh, to let sheriff's department give their folks the extra money. And, uh, as I went back and listened to it, I heard a comment made that was fifty percent correct and fifty percent incorrect, and I just wanted to make sure that you all understood. Uh, during that discussion, a comment was made that EMS and 911 were getting money. Well, I want you to know, your EMS folks aren't getting anything. Uh, 911, the dispatchers, and myself included, I told the 911 board I did not necessarily want it, they could give it to the dispatcher, they insisted that I take the same bonus the dispatcher did, so I took that, but the 911 board did approve a six hundred dollar bonus for the dispatchers and myself. And of course, y'all understand that's money that comes from the state, that comes from the fee everybody pays on their telephone each month, so that has nothing to do with this money here, but I wanted to clear that up. And 911, the dispatchers and myself did get a small six hundred dollar bonus. Your EMS employees have gotten that, I just wanted to make sure y'all understood that. Thank you.
And he did ask me about doing one, and I told him that we, that my departments were not going to do one, because we, we made a promise last year to the taxpayers that we wouldn't do anything until we had our financial situations fixed, so all those did not, any, any departments under me did not do that. Any other, Mr. Davis?
At the road and bridge committee meeting, they asked if I could sell all that equipment at Ritchie Brothers? Does that, that need to go before?
Uh, I don't think it goes to, I can't go tonight because we didn't.
They did not, honestly, for asset purposes.
Okay.
You did that, you're off.
Yeah, get that, so we're, you're out of there.
No problem.
Any other business? No, I'll take a motion to adjourn. My friend's going to motion to adjourn, second is Lynn. I have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
No, you are adjourned.